Okay, what time is it? Seven oh one. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our, there's Counselor O'Brien. Welcome to our council meeting. Today's June sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Still on twenty-two, okay? If everyone could please rise, we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, in accordance with mass general laws, I have to let everybody know that we're videotaping and audiotaping this meeting and inquiring if anyone else in the audience is doing the same. Anyone? Okay, thank you. I don't, can you take a roll?
Certainly. Counselor Laflambeau.
Present.
Counselor Griffin.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Eager.
Here.
Vice President Clune.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
President Sullivan.
Here, thank you. Okay, I'd like to move approval of the agenda as it's listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
And Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, thank you. All right. Flying through this. Okay, we do have a public hearing this evening. Counselor Griffin is not here, so I'm going to move to open the public hearing to consider a utility petition submitted by EverSource Gas for gas main replacement on Neptune Ave, Avondale Ave, Rochelle, Roseland Ave, Harrison. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. We don't have anyone here from the utility, however, I do know through correspondence with Counselor Griffin that the utility subcommittee voted unanimously for this action by the utility companies. Anyone in the audience like to address the council on anything related to this public hearing? No, 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 that's coming up next. No, this is a public hearing on a utility petition. That's okay. Anyone, you can't hear me? Okay, anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, moving to second the discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
And I vote yes, thank you. Okay, now's the chance for public comment. Come on up to the microphone, Roberta, state your name for the record, and everyone gets five minutes. You can address the council on anything that there is not a public hearing coming up or has been.
Very good, thank you, President Sullivan. Roberta Page, and I'm here actually as president and on behalf of It's West Springfield, Inc., which is a 501(c)(3) organization here in town, and I just wanted to kind of review a couple of things that we're pursuing this, as you know, the bronze statue of figure somewhere, hopefully in town, and hopefully have it available for our 250th in a couple of years. And so with that in mind, It's West Springfield submitted to the eligibility of determination form to the CPA to see about funding because we had reviewed the historic preservation section for the CPA. And so based on that, this was on, January, February, March, April 12th, that we attended that meeting and submitted the first, the first part of that. And we did, for that historic category, based on what we thought was something, and these are the different topics, I guess, if you will, for that particular historic section, to enhance the character of town and/or demonstrate a public benefit, and if this, of course, would be for our town and for tourism, et cetera, an historic significance, which of course figure, which is the progenitor of the Morgan Horse, is certainly of historic significance for our town. It's a structure, it would be a structure. It's on the state register, and West Springfield is noted, as I told you before, and figure is noted. That was the colt that was born right on Bernie Avenue at that farm back then. And so it certainly would have significance in the history or culture of the city or town. That's another element. It would be by acquisition, bringing this sculpture, sculpteur, doing a sculpture, bringing it to town, and bringing it into being. So those elements, we thought, certainly were appropriate. And then we were waiting for the result for It's West Springfield to see, hopefully receive funding, which we thought would be appropriate in that particular category. And what I got, I have to show you, was very disappointing. I received a plain white paper, okay? There's no date on it, there's no letterhead. It was sent to me personally, not to It's West Springfield. I was not doing this personally. It was sent to our office, which is at 10 Central Street, Suite 20, right next to the town hall, and it was Dear Ms. Page. And basically, it explained that on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, we received determination for figure's homecoming bronze sculpture from Attorney Wellhoff. I have no idea, first of all, it didn't come to It's West Springfield, it came to me. I'm not doing this personally. Have no idea who Attorney Wellhoff is. There was no first name, don't know. But then it said, based on her review, so I said, well, I guess it's a female. It is her opinion that the project as described would not be eligible for Community Preservation Act funding. And Attorney Wellhoff mentioned and then went through the section, historic resources is defined and so forth. And then it said, the last sentence, the very last sentence, said, if you have any questions, you can contact the chair or myself. And it was signed, my best, Kate Sullivan. Well, I thought we had, I thought we had an attorney, Kate, oop, where is she? I thought she was here. Kate, and I thought, well, she's married and she's now Sullivan, but I thought it was Scott. I have no idea who it was. There's no anything on this letter. So it was a little disconcerting, and we would like to see how we can kind of look at it again somehow, some way. But as some of you know, and some of you were in my classes, actually, I taught English, I taught how to do a proper letter, and there's no address, particularly, there's no date on this. And so I just think that, you know, we would like to see if we can somehow, if figure and this whole thing is not part of our culture and part of our town and should be part of our town. I was in a Zoom meeting with the American Morgan Horse Association a couple of weeks ago, and they were meeting in Chicago, and it was their quarterly meeting, and they said, you should have this, what's the town doing? How are they helping? What's going on? So I'd like to approach this again, but also, I would suggest that, however this goes out from our town, I think it should be a little embarrassing, honestly, and I don't know who to contact. So I guess it would be Alan, Alan Howard. But I thank you for listening, and we're going to pursue it, see if we can't make it happen through CPA and/or other resources, because I know there's an awful lot of funding resources here in town now, through free cash and all that, and I know the budget's going to be discussed tonight and has been discussed. We'd like to see how the town can chip in, and that frankly is how all of the Morgan Horse Associations are saying, what's the town doing? So hopefully, we can come up with something. Thank you for listening, and good luck with the budget tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Joyce Corbett, 499, excuse me, I have allergies, 499 Piper Speedway. I'm here this evening because I have been informed that if a counselor attends a meeting electronically, that you get credit, and I want to give credit to the two counselors that were, I'm not electronically connected, I still have a stupid phone. So there were two counselors that were, attended the meeting, the last meeting about the DPW yard, and I want to acknowledge them personally and publicly. With the two counselors, they had told, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you paying attention, and Ms. Smith, thank you very much. I've also been informed that if you review the videotape after the fact, you get points too. So I want to thank everybody who paid attention to the DPW yard after the fact, and I'm assuming that you all did, so again, I want to personally and publicly thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Pat, come on up. Can't talk about anything on the budget, though, the public hearing's already been closed. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move down the agenda, approval of the minutes. I'll entertain, I'll move approval of the regular and public hearing minutes of May 16th, 2022.
Second.
We've been seconded, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Absent.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. Seven in favor, one abstention, thank you. Communication, any counselors have any communication for the council and those in the audience this evening? Counselor DiStefano?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. Hope you'll just bear with me for a moment or two, I have a couple of items I'd like to bring up tonight. First, I just want to thank the mayor and all the department heads for all the help that they provided during the budget process. As Chair of the Budget Subcommittee, it was, it was my first involvement with, formerly with the budget, and it was, you know, appreciated greatly to have the department heads come out, spend some time with us, at times face some pretty pointed questions, but in every instance, they were, they were very forthright, and they were able to answer all of our questions. And anything that they didn't have prepared that night, they subsequently followed up with emails, and that's appreciated. One of the other items that I became aware of during the Budget Subcommittee, and again, want to thank the mayor, the school committee, the central maintenance department, I believe is what it, what it's known as. A couple of years ago, when I first ran, one of the things I had said that I would look to do was try to provide free feminine hygiene products for the middle school and high school. And when I first broached the subject, I thought it was best to discuss with the school committee and the superintendent, and they corrected me and asked that I bring it forward to the, to the, to the cap, the central maintenance department. And working with the mayor, when we were talking about it again this year, one of the individuals, somewhat surprisingly, told us that it was already done, that the town's already done that, that all those supplies are provided free of cost. That's not a state law requirement yet, it's still being debated, so I think it's important for everyone to know that the town went out and did that on its own, proactively, and, you know, for, for, for all of us in town, I think it's a good thing, I think it's as essential as soap and bathroom tissues. So again, thank you to the mayor and everyone who's involved with that. The last item I want to discuss is an invitation I received from the mayor to attend a hearing that the, well, not so much a hearing, but an informational session that Mass DOT put together. I don't know how many of you are aware, but the town, well, the city of Westfield and the city of West Springfield were invited to, to, I guess, a informational session where there's going to be work done, and some of you who travel Route 20 west into Westfield have seen the roadwork being done there. What they're proposing to do causes grave concerns for me, and I think it's best for as many townspeople who travel that road and live in that district, which I represent, to be aware of. The state is not only proposing, but they're actually moving ahead with it, and I don't know that they solicited any input from the two adjoining cities as to whether we were in favor of it or not, but they're, they're enforcing what's called a road diet. Some of you probably first became familiar with it on Riverdale Road. And to me, you know, they're not proposing any new crosswalks in this area, and the area we're talking about is basically between Old Westfield Road and East Mountain Road. So they're going to take four lanes, and they're going to crunch them down to one in each direction. When the question was asked, what, what the purpose was, it was, it was referenced to, there were some fatalities in that area. There were, I think in the data they had provided with, provided to us in the hearing, two fatalities. There were also a predominantly large number of rear-end crashes. So my question at the time was, if we reduce four lanes to two, are we not going to queue up more cars and have a greater potential for rear-end crashes? They indicated that that's possible. So it can't be for outright safety purposes if we could have more rear-end crashes. My biggest concern is, no one is going to speed through the end of the road diet going into Westfield, because there are at least four traffic lights between East Mountain Road and the bridge, where the lanes will reopen again to two in both directions. But when you come around the corner after Old Westfield Road, and I think is what's Dewey, where it dumps in, that's now you can't turn left onto Dewey if you're traveling eastbound on 20. So everybody who comes up near where I live, Hillcrest, Rogers, Ohio, Lower Beverly, Charles Ave, which is already difficult to get out of Hawthorne, it's going to be a speedway, because I guarantee you, people who are queued up in that one lane traveling eastbound, as soon as they get through it, they're going to pin it until they hit the next light, and the only next crossing station, which is at Walcott, I believe, and, and Sibley Ave, I mean Rogers Ave. So tonight, I'm hoping the paper will run this, but the individual from DOT, whose name that we were provided with for the invitation, is Matthew Minihan, and Matthew's email is M-A-T-T-H-E-W dot M-I-N-I-H-A-N at DOT dot state dot M-A dot U-S. People should email him and tell him it's a bad idea. It's unsafe for people who live in District Three, between Charles Ave and Walcott. I think anytime you're going to do work like that, there should have been much more opportunity for input. You know, I'm not referring anybody to the state rep or state senator, because I don't know how much advance warning they had about it. They asked some of the same questions myself, the mayor, and President Sullivan asked. So take a moment, send an email, ask them questions, see what kind of response we get. I'm just fearful of what this is going to do, and I travel this road Monday through Friday, between Hillcrest Avenue and East Mountain Road, to work and from work, so I'm pretty confident I travel it as much, if not more, than anybody else, and I have some reservations about what's being done. Thank you for indulging me, President Sullivan.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Any other communication? Do you want to note our student rep has graduated, wishing her well? I also want to remind the council that the next meeting is on June 21st, because town hall will be closed on June 20th, in observance of Juneteenth, as required by state law. Unfinished business, I'm going to move to that. I'll move to approve the utility petition submitted by EverSource Gas for gas main replacements on Neptune, Avondale, Rochelle, Roseland, and Harrison.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes, thank you. New business, I'm going to do some referrals, and if there's no objection, I'll do them one at a time, but I'd like to waive the formal reading of the General Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 207, Small Cell Wireless Facilities Within the Public Right-of-Way, and refer the amendment to the Ordinance and Policy Subcommittee. There will be a public hearing to discuss this amendment on June 21st. I'll also, if there's no objection, I'll waive the formal reading of the General Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 134, Article 2, Marijuana Establishments, and refer the amendment to the Ordinance and Policy Subcommittee. There will also be a public hearing to discuss this amendment on June 21st, and I anticipate the mayor will provide a presentation. Also, if there's no objection, I'll waive the formal hearing and refer the supplemental appropriation request of $345,241.50 for the snow and ice deficit to the Budget Subcommittee. There will also be a public hearing on June 21st. June 21st will be a busy day, public hearing. Counselor DiStefano, would you like to move the reserve fund transfer?
Move to approve the reserve fund transfer request of $70,930 to the account interest on long-term debt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor DiStefano, did your committee address this?
We did, and we voted unanimously to support, three to zero.
Okay, great. Any other discussion, counselors, questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
And I vote yes, thank you. Counselor DiStefano, do you have another one for us?
I do. Move to authorize the mayor to accept a donation of real property and any and all improvements thereon located on Upper Virginia Avenue, Assessor's Map 082, Block 005, Lot 017, and further to authorize the mayor to execute any documents as reasonably necessary for the conveyance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor DiStefano, did your?
The Budget Subcommittee approved unanimously in favor to support this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? I have one question for Mark Noonan. Have you had an opportunity to walk this property? Is it, why the, why is it undevelopable? Is it because of wetlands, or just he wants to dump the property? The parcel that being donated off of Upper Virginia, have you had an opportunity?
As I looked at it, the developers, it's mostly wet, but it's, it's in developer property that we own, it's tax deductible, I think under your administration, we even acquired a piece of that same.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else ready to vote? Okay, Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous, thank you. Vice President Clune, you want to move an appointment?
Sure. Move to approve the appointment of Jennifer Marcus to Council on Aging for a term to begin June 7th, 2022, and end on April 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, and take a position on this?
Unanimous approval.
All right, excellent, thank you. Anyone else, any questions, ready to vote? Okay, Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, thank you. Welcome aboard. Okay, now we head into the fiscal year 2023. I guess that's why everybody's here, and come to see our smiling faces. All right. I'll, I'll move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $113,180,400 to the general fund, the operating budget, for the 12 months beginning July 1, 2022, for the purposes and in the amounts as set forth in the fiscal year 2023, proposed budget in accordance with the West Springfield Home Rule Charter and the Massachusetts General Laws, Section 44, Chapter 44, Section 32, as amended as follows. From taxation, local revenues, and other available funds, $111,735,500 from pre-cash, $1,044,900, from debt service stabilization fund, $400,000. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion on the mayor's proposed budget. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion, I think, here. Let me see. Counselor Clune, you want to take the chair for a minute? All right, I'd like to move that the council cut $100,000 from the street lighting line number 19 on the miscellaneous account, as I stated, $100,000.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. So let me start by saying, in, kind of in conjunction with Counselor DiStefano said, as we all know, inflation is skyrocketing, I'd like to do a little research on these things before we move forward, as we all do, and I just want to make a couple of notes here, that the U.S. Department of Labor reports that the Consumer Price Index, CPI, increased during the month of March by 1.2%. And this is the, this March, CPI would have been the largest annual increase in 40 years. Annualized, using this March increase, it'd be analyzed, annualized would equal 14.4% going forward. And the reason I mention this is because I always look at the CPI in conjunction with pricing, pricing increases and budgetary items, and I never believed that the town should be above the CPI when the budget's being put together. So the reason I mention this is because I do want to compliment the mayor and all the department heads, because the proposed increase to this year's budget is below that. However, in conjunction with my proposed cut, the street leading, street lighting account, all the street lighting at town has been changed over from incandescent to LED, which is a savings to the community. And in conjunction with that, and based on our net metering, the town is actually getting credits for the electricity based on net metering. Now, I know that might change next year, maybe it'll go in a different count or what have you, but, and I know we're a little nervous based on not having a full history or full year with LED lights, however, based on 2021, $200,000 spent with the more expensive lights, and this year, the $350,000 being proposed, I think it's pretty safe to say that $100,000 will not damage the town in this area, thus the proposal for my $100,000 cut. Happy to entertain any questions.
Roll call vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
President Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
By vote of favor, eight in favor, zero opposed, motion passed.
Do we have any other proposed action on the, the motion? A question to legal, so we base that cut, do we need to amend the, we're just, to Sharon, do we have to amend it from the main amended motion? So it'd be 100, all right. So the main amended motion now would be, so let's go to a vote on the, unless there's any other action taken by the council. All right, I'll move approval of the overall budget, subtracting out the $100,000, it'll be $113,800, $80,400, main motion. Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion on the main motion as amended? Okay, seeing none, Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, thank you. Okay. All right, I'll move that the town appropriate the sum of $250,000 to the stabilization fund from pre-cash.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, thank you, it's unanimous. Excuse me, I moved that the town appropriate the sum of $250,000 to the other post-employment benefits, OPEC trust fund from pre-cash.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $2,93,116.41 to the Ambulance Enterprise Fund for the 12 months beginning July 1, 2022, for the purposes and any amounts to be set forth in fiscal year 2023 proposed budget, which is on file with the Town Council and posted on the town's website. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this motion. Okay, seeing none. Counselor DeStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. All right, Water Enterprise Fund, move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $5,515,433.47 to the Water Enterprise Fund for the 12 months beginning July 1, 2022, for the purposes and the amounts as set forth in the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget, which again is on file with the Town Council and posted on the town's website. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DeStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Move that, this is Sewer Enterprise Fund, move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $5,450,933.35 to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the 12 months beginning July 1, 2022, for the purposes and the amounts as set forth in the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this motion. Okay, seeing none. Counselor DeStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Okay, Cable Television Public Access Enterprise Fund, move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $274,030.14 to the Cable Television Public Access and Cable Related Enterprise Fund for the 12 months beginning July 1, 2022, and for the purposes and the amounts as set forth in the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget, which is on file with the Town Council and posted on the town's website. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion. Counselor Eager?
So I'm assuming this is where we, I make a motion about the Granicus Live, to cut the Granicus Livestream software?
That would be correct.
Okay.
I just need a line item, and I need a second.
So move to cut $10,500 from the cable television service account representing the Granicus Livestream software, and the reason?
Wait a minute, yeah, I need a second. Just to, just to clarify the motion, I believe it's $10,592.
$10,000, okay, $10,900?
$592.
$592.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I need a second.
I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, seconded by Counselor DeStefano. Counselor Eager?
So the main reason for this cut is more just to forward the debate. We had excellent, we had, we had, for years, we were using Livestream, another service that was quite user-friendly. Granicus is a government contractor and has been, the product. I've been hearing reports people are struggling to use it. Also, there are free services like Google, I'm sorry, YouTube Live, that we could utilize as a cost-saving. But I don't see why we're paying more money for a product that's harder to use. So that's why I'm making this suggested cut.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we ready to vote? Okay, Counselor LaFlamme?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
No.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor DeStefano?
No.
I vote no. Two in favor, six opposed. The motion fails. Anything else on this motion, the public access? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DeStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Unanimous. Capital Fund Appropriation, move that the town appropriate the sum of $9,512,550 to the Capital Fund for the 12 months beginning July 1, 2022, for the purposes and the amounts as set forth in the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget, which is on file with the Town Council and posted on the town's website. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion. Counselor DeStefano?
President Sullivan, just after speaking with the Budget Subcommittee, I'd like to propose amendment that we reduce the capital fund appropriation from, by $1.5 million. So that would be a new total of $8,012,550. And that $1.5 million is associated with the new DPW yard land acquisition.
Okay, I'll second that.
Just, if I may, just expound on that. It's not so that the Budget Subcommittee's intent is to restrict the mayor from being able to pursue the acquisition of land associated with a new DPW yard. It's just that it would have the mayor bring back a new proposal for a new parcel acquisition, rather than leaving the money in there under what was originally brought up as the parcel on Piper Cross.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Did your committee take a position?
We did. We were unanimously in support of that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DeStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Eager? Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
I vote yes. One in favor, no, seven in favor, one opposed. The motion passes. So now we'll vote on the main amended amount as proposed by Counselor DeStefano. So I'll move that we approve the amended, main amended motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion as amended? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DeStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Departmental Revolving Funds, Annual Spending Limits, move that the Town Council authorize the following spending limits for each revolving fund established by the town pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the 12 months beginning July 1, 2022, for the purposes set forth in the town's ordinances and in the following amounts. Revolving Fund Library, $10,000, these are spending limits, as I state them for the public's information. Library, $10,000. Council on Aging Activity, $15,000. Town Council, $15,000. DPW, Pavement Restoration, $100,000. Health Department, Medical Goods and Services, $20,000. Health Department, Tobacco, Nicotine Delivery Devices, $5,000. Police, Public Travel, and Recreation Patrol Fund, $100,000. Bear Hole, $50,000. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DeStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. Unanimous. Thank you. Community Preservation Fund Appropriation and Reserves, move that the town appropriate or reserve from anticipated Community Preservation Fund annual revenues or available funds, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2022, as follows. Administrative expenses, 5%, historic resources, 10%, open space, including recreation, 10%, community housing, 10%. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I just want, Sharon, if you could explain maybe to the council these, I believe you indicated these percentages are minimum allocations. Is that correct?
That is correct. Per the Community Preservation, the governing laws, that would be the minimum that must be reserved for those purposes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor DeStefano?
Just a follow-up. It's the minimum that must be reserved. Is there a minimum that they must spend that aligns with this?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DeStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor Eager? Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor LaFlamme?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Okay. I don't believe there's anything else come before, other business come before the council? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you.